City Planner.
Gary Lawton, alternate.
Roman Loringer, alternate.
John Soares, vice chairman.
Anthony Delary, commissioner.
Mike Futter, right.
Paul Strouderman, city engineer.
And Bill Leeds, chairman. First item of, as a reminder to everyone, the next regular meeting of the Bristol Plan Information will be Wednesday, January 28th, 2015. First item on the agenda. Yes, yes. Personally, I have an appointment on the acting secretary, because our normal secretary, Marie Keaton, is not here yet, so Commissioner Delaria will take over until she gets here.
Item number one on the agenda is approval of minutes. First meeting minutes of the special meeting from March 4th, 2014.
And we hear the minutes, there's only two members that were, are here tonight, so we're going to have to postpone the acceptance of that special meeting until our next meeting.
Second set of minutes from November 24th, 2014, regular meeting.
On that minutes, there's three of us that are here. Commissioner Soares and Commissioner Delaria and, oh, Commissioner Walton is here, and myself, so it would be four of us voting on that. So a motion would be in order to accept the minutes on the November 24th, 2014.
You can go ahead and call if you can vote.
I think Mr. Loringer too. Okay, so a motion would be in order.
Making a motion to accept the minutes of the regular meeting on November 24th, 2014.
Second.
The motion was made in second, any discussion? If none, all in favor? Aye. Close, Commissioner carries. Next.
Third set of minutes from the special meeting of December 3rd, 2014.
Voting members on that one would be Commissioner Soares, Commissioner Harrigan, no, I mean, Commissioner Walton, Commissioner Loringer, and myself.
Should I make a motion that, I think, Commissioner approve the minutes of the special meeting of December 3rd, 2014?
Second.
Motion was made in second, any discussion? If none, all in favor? Aye. Close, Commissioner carries. The voting members tonight would be Commissioner Soares, Commissioner Walton, Commissioner Loringer, Commissioner Delaria, and myself. Next item.
No, under pending applications, we have none. So, item three on the agenda, new application, application number 380, Site Plan Medical Office Building, 1301 Farmington Avenue, access map 49, lot 27, BG, General Business Zone, Lincoln and Damato LLC applicant.
Chairman, members of the commission, you have in your packets, as part of this application, you have the first staff review comments. This was initially reviewed by staff on November 18th, 2014. Subsequent to that review, we received a revised set of drawings. Those were distributed to the staff last Tuesday, and I think because of your meeting kind being on an off night, the staff have officially finished its review until tomorrow. I can tell you however, that our office reviewed these plans relative to the first set of staff comments, and by and large, most of our staff comments have gone away. There are a couple of matters still left. I did receive written comments from the water department, and they, their issues from the first review have been addressed. They have no conflicts with the plan, and engineering had comments from the first review. I don't know if the status is of those, but as you can see from the first review, there are only, there were only three comments originally, so we can get into, after the applicants represented, presented this to you, I can get into a little bit greater detail with the staff comments.
State your name and address for the record, and try to speak loudly so you get picked up on the mics.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Charles Nyberg. My office is Associated Architects. We are located at 37 Northwest Drive in Plainville. I'm here this evening on behalf of the applicant, Lincoln and Damato, for the approval of a site plan for a permitted use at the 1301 Farmington address, Farmington Avenue address. The site is right off of Farmington Avenue, Route 6. To the east is a condo development. To the west is a single-family house. To the west of that is a vacant parcel of property, and then to the west of that is the shopping center where Hobby Lobby is presently located. The site contains a number of buildings. The house currently is vacant. There's an out shed to the back, a garage, and a building about a third of the way back on the property. The applicant, the owner, the tenant, I guess the owner who is looking to purchase the property from Lincoln and Damato is Dr. Susan Andyanka. Her practice is Pediatric Care Center. She is located presently on Route 6 in Farmington, I'm sorry, Bristol, and she is near the, she's right adjacent to the auto parts store, and I believe right next to the, or if not one lot away, next to the Liberty Bank Building on Route 6. Just as a bit of history, we have spent a couple of years working with her to find a new location. She wants to stay in Bristol, that was her objective initially. We looked at a site in Farmington, the Colonnade. We came back to another property that the Damatos had, North Side Square. We looked at another property prior to Liberty Bank's purchase of the site where they are now located, there was a dog kennel back, or a dog grooming facility. We looked at putting her in there, she couldn't make a deal with the landlord. We looked at another location in Farmington, and finally, this one has come along and is the preferential, the obvious location. She wants to keep her client base, which is primarily in Bristol. The site development plan has placed the new building to the rear of the site, and I will profess, as we got into the planning part of this, working with Alan, he had suggested that we look to possibly put the building up to the front and try to keep the parking in the back, but as we got into the planning of the building, and how traffic would flow, how patients would come in, the look of the building, we have located it to the rear of the site with the parking at the front. The curb cut is generally about in the same location that is on the site presently. The existing house would fall where my left hand is located, the garage, and then the shed to the back. The building is roughly 4,000 square feet. We meet the current parking regulation as far as number of parking spaces. The problem that had existed with the site is one of sanitary. The sanitary line, as I remember it ends down where the shopping center is located, and there is a sanitary line that comes from the back of the condo project, condo site, and is, there has been an agreement established between the condo association and this parcel to allow for a sewer easement to connect to the sanitary line location on the condo parcel. So that has been reviewed by the health department, the city, and is an acceptable methodology to provide sewerage for this parcel. We have a, again, I'm not sure what detail I should go into. We, we obviously have a drainage system on the site that engineering has reviewed. We've taken care of the sanitary. We have water and gas service to our building. We have all of the requisite site details that are necessary. The floor plan, again, the building is 60 feet north to south, and 68 feet east to west. There's a series of doctor offices, exam rooms, waiting, staff areas and what have you, and the building is made as a wood frame structure. I think so. Residents with same-sized properties and just pretty much similar format subdivision, what the idea is, really, what is the intent.
Okay, Commissioner Lawton?
I'll go along with public hearing. I think that his neighbor should have a right to hear what's going on.
Okay. That all, my opinion on this would be a public hearing, only because, as Mr. Strouderman said earlier, Mr. One-Here indicated that a lot of these lots are very, very big and...
Well, Mr. Stroudman indicated that.
Mr. Stroudman. Sorry, sorry. You know, maybe, maybe, maybe some of the neighbors might consider wanting to do a rear lot themselves. If we didn't have a public hearing, they might say, why did they get one, why did we get one, maybe we should acquire some.
All concerned right now is are we going to open a door that we can't shut?
Well, I guess, well, that's what possible.
Because when you look at how many pieces, how many properties like this are on?
I know.
And that's...
That's why I think, that's why I think we should have a public hearing.
Well, that, that brings us to condition number two of the waiver requirements, which I quote, "conditions exist which adversely affect the subject property which are not generally applicable to other property in the area." So the key question for this application is, what makes this property so special compared to the other properties in the area? Why should this property receive a rear lot in the absence of other lots that appear to us quite similar?
Okay, and I guess my question that I'm not, throwing out there, if that's the case, what does a public hearing get you that you wouldn't get otherwise? Which I think is the question on any public hearing, where this commission or other commissions have an option. And if you know that already, or if that, if that's a concern already, does having a public hearing get you additional information that, that you feel you need in order to make a decision? Because, keep in mind that notwithstanding the waiver request, if the subdivision, and this is the key, well, it's the key thing, if the subdivision meets all the subdivision regulations, this commission has no choice but to approve it. It's an administrative act. The, in this instance, the fact that the applicant wants a rear lot in a subdivision this small is what triggers the waiver provision. If that waiver request was unnecessary, the commission would have to approve the subdivision when you held the hearing, not assuming it met all the regulations. But obviously, you know, it doesn't meet the rear lot provision, because the applicant's requesting a rear lot in a three-lot subdivision, essentially.
I have a question for the applicant. You said you want to split the property so that you can sell the property so that there would be no absentee landlord. If that's the case, why not just add on, why, why would we have the made in show migrants? But why are we adding a lot? If he's going to own, if what he's doing is subdividing a lot so he can put a house in the back, so that person who buys the entire lot can be the landlord for the property in the front? That's what he said, so that he can have somebody buy the property, and they would be the landlord for the property in the front. So why are we, why is he, why does he need to build, why does he need to subdivide? He's going to have somebody that's going to own the whole property have a special place in the back and need his own property? If he owns all the property, all he needs to put is a house, put another house on the property.
You can't do that, zoning regulations don't allow it.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Zoning regulations don't allow, would not allow a single family house on the same lot as the hot, the three-family houses.
So it's to split the property to deal with that?
Well, if, if, in order, in order to get another residence on the property, you'd have to split the property, that's what the applicant is requesting. But keep in mind that the commission and the city doesn't have the authority to limit who buys the property or whether they live there or not. That's a, that's a private matter involving buyers and settlers and owners and the like.
I guess my idea on the public hearing, going along with the public hearing, is just more of information and awareness of the neighbors around, with the intent.
With an public hearing, I just, I have a feeling we're going over the box, everything I've been able to close, and we have a lot of fighting and a lot of arguing, and we're going to turn sections like this into overcrowding, overburdened, and it's just going to become a mess. Maybe it's, it's personal property, he can request what he wants to do with it, he can certainly ask us something like that, but looking down the road, how many houses, if you get a big enough piece of property, you could subdivide that thing then three, four times. How many houses become enough? And this is already, there's a three-family house in the front, three, a three-family house in the front. You're adding another one on that piece of property.
Now, the house in the back can only be a single-family.
Yes, because the total area would be four people, four families living in how many houses?
This house is a three-family house?
The house, the house in the front is a three-family house. Because best we can tell, it was built in the seventies or eighties. It's a triplex, yes.
So you put the house in, you put a house in the back, and you got four families, and they all don't get along. You're opening, I mean, it's certainly a person's personal preference, but they want to do the talking, and no...
That's exactly my...
But the worst, it could be a worse scenario where this could start to snowball into something we can't stop, because when people start arguing with us, and start fighting with the city, that, well, you let him do it, like if we do it...
Well, well, that, that assumes that a waiver would be granted in this case.
But the waiver, the pay, debates, based on what the applicant just said, he's looking for income to help offset it.
But the commission doesn't have to grant it based on...
If it doesn't feel his reason is compelling.
So again, what I'm trying to get to, and I know we're kind of mixing things here, when I'm trying to get the commission to, and again, you know, there appears to be a desire to hold a hearing, and if that's the commission's will, so be it, and again, the question I think you need to ask yourself is, what will a public hearing get you in terms of information to help you with this application? Not with other applications, this application. If you think, if you think that there is information that can be gleaned from the public hearing that you wouldn't get otherwise, then certainly schedule a public hearing, and then members, you know, residents of the neighborhood and others who are interested can come out and speak. If you don't, if you feel that, that, that doesn't get you any, enough, doesn't get you any pertinent information, or any information that you can use to make a decision on this application, then I think that raises the question as to whether or not a public hearing is warranted. But, okay, that's, that's your decision.
So, let me just go through this, you know, one more time, and let's have this open discussion here. You know, based on page 17, as we indicated, you know, rear lots, and that's the maximum number of rear lots allowed, any residential subdivision should be according to the following table, 1 to 4, 0. Then we go to number three for the waiver. And the key word, I think, in this is, if it finds that all of the following conditions have been satisfied. Number one, waiver is specifically requested or writing by the subdivider, yes?
Any yes.
Conditions exist which adversely affect the subject property and which are not generally applicable to the other properties in the area. So we have to decide, how is this adversely affecting the property and which are not generally applicable to the other properties in the area? Well, you know, the way we've been talking, that, does it adversely affect this property? And if it does, and as Commissioner Walton indicated, that some of these other properties in the area might say, well, if they're going to put a rear lot there, then we may have opportunity to put a rear lot.
If I might. Go ahead. I, I think you have to, you've got to make the decision whether or not you want to hold the hearing.
Right.
Because if you want to hold the hearing, as Mr. Stroudman indicated, you're going to have this conversation again.
Right.
Which, that's fine, but you really need to decide what your procedure is going to be. And if you decide that you want to hold a hearing, then discussing the waiver at this point may be academic, because you're going to have the same discussion after you close the public hearing. The purpose of the public hearing is to hear from the public. If you think there's information that will come out of the public hearing that will assist you in deciding on the subdivision, including the granting of waiver, then you'll schedule a public hearing. If you decide that that's not the case, and the decision is made to not hold a hearing, then it would make, it would be appropriate to go back and discuss the waiver, because then you're discussing the substance of the application. And I apologize that we've kind of gotten too mixed up, considering, but I, but I think you need to decide whether or not you're going to hold the hearing. If you're going to hold the hearing, then all the discussion essentially starts, stops now and starts again next month.
My only reason for wanting a public hearing is, I think, in this case, because of its proximity of properties.
See what the other neighbors have to say?
That's all I have.
Okay. All right. If that's the case, then the motion would be in order to have a public hearing, next month. Motion's in order. On application 381.
Chairman, application 381, subdivision 373 Wobba Street, one lot to two lots, assess as map, seven lot, 37, R15, single-family residential, Richard Fraser applicant. I make a motion that the commission hold a public hearing on this application, and on next meeting, January 28th, 2015.
Motion was made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is made, a second, any further discussion? If none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, closed, no? Motion carries. See you next month.
Thank you. Have a good holiday.
414. Thank you, yes, thank you, Merry Christmas. Mayor Ray?
Yep.
Next item of business.
Under zoning commission referrals, application number 2176, change of zone from R10, single-family residential, to I, general industrial, for the rear portion of 406 Washington Street, access map 42, lot 60, part, part, sorry, part, Booth Enterprises LLC applicant.
Thank you. This is a report from the zoning commission.
Name of that for the record, please.
Sorry, names I have, it's 271 Farmington Avenue, I forgot. Now, this is a, an application for a zone change, and this is an extension of a lake zone. The applicant's property is shown on the overall map in front of you, and it's labeled 42-53-8. You'll see it's in an industrial zone. It's adjacent to the piece that we're requesting the zone change for. The area is in zone industrial on either side of him, and to the south as well. The piece of property in question actually fronts on Washington Street, it's 406 Washington, that's in R10 zone. The house on this lot burnt down a number of years ago, the lot is vacant. You'll notice from the map that you'll see that the houses are all moved up towards Washington Street, and to the rear of the houses, by and large, there are garages, which are basically the end of the utility of those lots, even though some of these lots are very deep. In this particular case, I know Alan went out there today, and I've been out there two days ago, is beyond where those garages would line up on Washington Street, the property drops off. So there's a, there's a big drop that gets down to the property that my client owns behind there. He has a business there, and he wants to extend some of this parking area for his trucks, and this lot has no utility, has a residential parcel of land, so he was thinking that he buy this land from that person and then extend his property. The, the protection, so to speak, of the neighborhood is that in a residential zone that butts an industrial zone, there's a 25% setback going to the rear. So we know that 25% of the parcel that we're going to change the zone can't be touched at all, it's going to be used as a buffer, and so there's going to be some landscaping and some things done so that the neighbor to the west isn't impacted. The reality of it is, she's not impacted anyway, because her garage is right behind the house, and beyond that, it drops down. There's little or no impact to her property at all. So we're asking for a recommendation from the zoning commission for a zone change from the R10 zone to the industrial zone, the condition being that this parcel of land will not be an independent lot, but it will merge with the lot of the applicant. Okay, so it's all going to be one parcel of land, not going to be a separate parcel that he's going to have a driveway to, create a rear lot, so to speak. That's not what the intent is. This is going to be merged as one parcel of land with lot 42-53-8. Okay? So that's the assurance that you have, that it's not going to be a separate individual lot.
Is 42-53-7 also going to be part of this merge?
Well, Blake owns that, Blake Delobian owns that piece, and it's certainly likely that he will get a portion of this, but that, that has not been cast in stone yet. We're going to negotiate with him still.
Okay.
The, the lot of the applicant will then be a L-shaped lot. Make sense? Paul?
The applicant is Booth Enterprises?
Booth Enterprises, that's correct. And again, Commissioner, that's 42-53-8 on your map.
He's on West 4.
See it there? He, he's the applicant, he's buying that piece of land.
He's buying.
Correct. Subject to a zone change.
Can I make it clear that he's not buying, the proposal isn't for him to buy the whole piece on Washington Street? If he gets the zone change, the intention is that he would buy the rear two-thirds of the property that's rezoned.
He's going to be purchasing...
Parking for his...
Yes. The lot up on Washington Street, if you look on page two of the map, you'll see the mention 4, that is going to be 120, about 150, that's the residential lot. It's 17,518 square feet in an R10 zone, and the remainder of the lot is going to be, is transferred to Booth, who is the applicant. On page two of the map, you get a little better view of the proposal. So the hatched portion of that lot is going to be transferred upon approval to Mr. Booth at 34 West Street.
So he's buying the whole lot, and he's going to split it, so part of it will become parking for his trucks, and the other part will stay, up in the front, this part will stay up for...
He may not buy the whole thing.
He's not buying the front part. The owner, the landowner is going to keep that, build a residential home on it, he's just going to sell the rear piece out to my client.
Okay.
Yep. And then he's going to excavate a little bit, give himself a little bit more room for his parking, for his trucks to turn around.
Okay.
Anyway, it's a, it's a, he just needs a little bit more room, and if we're the buffer, with a 25-foot buffer to the residential zone, he'll be able to still utilize that portion of land without impacting the neighbors. Any questions?
Deep Street over there.
Yeah. Yes, across the street.
So, basically, what I asked you for, on Blake's property, if you're just looking at this, everything that butts at 4260, who, if we approve this, who is still going to own that portion that butts Blake's property?
Mr. Booth, the applicant.
Mr. Booth, yes.
Okay.
There's nothing that would prevent him from selling a portion of the rezoned... There's nothing that would prevent him from selling a portion of the rezoned property of Mr. Delbeyanca.
Okay.
Okay? So.
And that's not a subdivision.
Right.
It's just a merger.
At the very least, if the zone change is approved and the split is made on the Washington Street lot, then there'll be a piece of industri, the, the lot on Worcester Court that's owned by the applicant will be this L-shaped parcel of land. If he chooses subsequently to all this, assuming it all happens, to sell a portion of that to Mr. Delbeyanca, who's his abutted of the north, Mr. Delbeyanca will still have industrially zoned land. So you'll have industrially zoned land attached to one or more industrial lots.
Okay.
And the lot, the remaining residential lot in the front would be, would have the same depth as the three lots that it abuts, or the three lots to the east of it, between that lot and Worcester Court.
That's correct.
Correct.
How many vehicles are part of the business? Well, you know, it, it fluctuates, depends on, I don't know the answers specifically, but I, but I know that if he has more room, he'd probably acquire a bit of a trust. He's in the excavation business, so it's different equipment comes and goes.
And one other thing to keep in mind is that this project proceeds, there will have to be a site plan submitted by the applicant, and I believe it will go to this commission. So he, he just, he just can't buy and all of a sudden pay them parking, although I can try, I guess, but he, if he wants to add on to his, to the area that would be acquired, he will need this board's approval.
And that's when you get to look at the buffers again.
Right. Okay.
While, while we're on that topic, you mentioned before that the lots have the houses, the garage, and then they drop off. Where does that drop off end? The lot drops off like that, how actually, they should go parking up?
Well, it drops off to his, his property, level of his property. If Worcester Street goes this way.
His property, is the bottom of the bank?
Is the base of the hill, correct.
Well, actually, the drop off ends, the drop, the drop off, if you're heading south, the drop off ends above the, the lot to the south, the one that's listed on the drawing is Titus Holdings. If you go to, if you go to, if you go into the Titus Holdings property, let me look at that area, that is lot, that sixty Worcester Court's the large industrial building.
Forty-two fifty-two dash one is it?
Correct. If you pull into their driveway on the north side of the building, the lot, the subject property actually is still higher there, and that drops off down to the property line where, where this, where this entire lot abuts sixty Worcester Court.
Yeah, it didn't go that far down. So it's certainly possible that a retaining wall or something, is that what you're thinking, Alan?
Well, I'm just saying that it, that it, the, the lot clearly drops off about where the proposed property line is, and it tends to be more level with the Bell City Lot and the Booth property.
Right.
Where it abuts those than it is with the lot, the, the front of the lot.
Isn't it kind of slope, Alan?
Oh, it doesn't continue.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I mean, I mean slope like this, but as you're going towards Worcester Court, because if you look at four-thirty-eight Washington Street, if you come down Washington Street, going toward the center of town, that all slopes so that it's eventually even Worcester Court, so the size of the property, this side of the property, it's all even with this front part. The property back here on the next one kind of slopes down towards Worcester Court, but also slopes to the back. And then when you're looking at four-zero-six on Washington Street, you can see it goes straight, but then you can see the hill where it starts to drop all the way into that.
And that tends to be more level with the abutting industrial lots than with the, than with the lot, it's the, the front part of this lot.
And, and, and I suspect that's why your garages are, where they are located, as you head west on Washington Street, because if you went back, then they'd be a bit softer.
One thing which we did not catch during this hour, is you may want to tell your severity that this lot is not at one-sixteen Washington Street. Apparently, the severity was unable to distinguish between the length of the lot frontage and its address.
That sounded like sarcasm.
No, it wasn't. It was just.
Just an observation.
No, thanks.
So if he can, if he can.
We'll adjust that.
Adjust that and provide us with the drawing.
He would have read the sheet.
What is that, four-zero-six, right?
Yes.
Four-zero-six is correct?
Yes.
Commissioners, any other questions for the applicant? You're also, Alan?
Yeah, I, I think one, one observation, and I don't know that the commission needs to include it in its recommendation, if you're going to recommend that this be approved, but it's something we'll staff will bring up to the zoning commission. The one thing you want to, we want to avoid, obviously, is if this is approved, that, you know, the zone change is approved, and then the applicant says, "You know, I think I'm going to keep the property, and I now have two-thirds of a piece of property that has an industrial zone on it." The zoning commission could, although they can't place conditions on a zone change, they can establish the effective date of the zone change, the date on which the transfer of this lot, this rear industrial portion, is, is made to Booth Enterprises. So that when we know the merger's been done, at that point, the zone change kicks in. I believe they did that with the city hardware property, Belanglars property, when they asked for the zone change on the side street. When the commission finally approved that, they said, "That, that goes into effect when the lots are merged."
If you want to make that part of your recommendation, it certainly fine plus.
Does the wording on the application have any weight to that same?
In terms of.
Specifically, property to be merged with property approved?
Well, that, that's certainly the intention, and certainly an applicant can represent that to the commission. If the commission wants the safeguard further, they could establish that as the effective date, whatever the date is that the lot is merged. That's when the zone change goes into effect. So if the applicant never merges the lot, he doesn't have a zone change.
Mr. Stradman? So commissioners, no other comments or questions?
No.
Motion would be in order as a recommendation to the zoning commission, and keeping in mind, determine, choose, have a reasonable for it. Motion is in order.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the planning commission recommend, the zoning commission, a favorable recommendation on application number two-one-seven-six, change of zone from R-ten, single-family residential, to I, general industrial, for the rear portion of four-zero-six Washington Street, assess as map forty-two, lot sixty, Park, Booth Enterprises LLC applicant, for the following reason, that it brings the adjacent industrial property a more natural fit with the property at four-zero-six Washington Street. And as a condition of this recommendation, that the zone change should not take effect until the transfer of the property to Booth Enterprises has been completed.
Motion was made in second. Any further discussion? If none? Oh, no, sir.
Oh, I don't know.
If none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Next item of business.
City council under referrals, appointment of representatives to Nogat Town Regional Planning Commission.
Mr. Chairman, and members of the commission will recall that we discussed this with you informally at your November meeting, and we provided, to you at that time, a letter that had been sent to the mayor from the consulting assistant director of the North Clark Valley Council of Governments, indicating that a representative, that each town, who would be represented in the, in the regional planning commission, which is part of the council of governments, would need one representative. And it was after a little bit of informal discussion, you guys agreed that Marie Keaton would be your, would be the city's representative. As you know, the mayor is the representative of the council of governments itself. There's a letter that was sent to you folks from Therese Pack after the last council meeting. It says, "At a meeting with the city clerk on December ninth, two thousand fourteen, it was voted to refer to the planning commission, the nomination of a representative to the new regional planning commission for the North Clark Valley Council of Governments." Please notify the town clerk with the commission's nomination once it has been approved. So you would need to take a formal vote, and it would be really, I think, it's not entirely clear, be a recommendation to the mayor, because he's the one who gets to, I believe, make the appointment. I guess informally, he's indicated a willingness to appoint Commissioner Keaton, but based on the, the manner in which the council of governments is setting up a mechanism for appointments, you get to make a recommendation, which is spelled out in a letter that the mayor received, so.
Right. Alan, raising his hand, should we?
It's not recognized, entirely up to you.
Guys? Yes, no? Absolutely. Okay. Go ahead.
Basically, I just wanted, I was wondering.
Identify yourself, name, address.
Shaun Rest, fifty-three Lancaster Road, Bristol.
Go ahead.
I'm just wondering, R-U-E-S-T.
Go ahead.
I'm just wondering if switching the regional planning agency, having a representative go to a different regional planning agency is going to change the direction of the development in the downtown, and how does that relate to the demographics and all the reports and everything that are coming through?
Again, really, you're, Alan, any thoughts?
It's, I don't know that's going to change it in any way, because the, the creation of the council of governments and the elimination of the Central Vancouver Regional Planning Agency was part of a larger plan by the state to realign the, the regional agencies. The city voted to go with the North Clark Valley Council of Governments, and that's where we're at.
According to letters sent to the mayor, said at the January sixth meeting, the scheduling functions of the new planning commission will be discussed, so obviously, nobody knows exactly what's going to happen until they set their own schedule and agenda.
Right. And they're going to meet that night.
So I have a feeling, under this new alignment, first, it will be a smaller fish in the bigger pond.
Actually, it'll be the second largest community in the region.
That's supposed to be.
Has it really?
Yes. Waterbury will be the largest community in the, in the region, followed by Bristol.
That's good.
That's good. Okay.
So motion would be in order as a recommendation to the city council.
The mayor.
To the mayor, for the appointment of Marie Keaton as our representative to Nogat County Valley Regional Planning Commission. Motion would be in order.
Let's make it clear, it's, it's the city's representative, not the planning commission.
City's, yes, okay.
Just want to make sure we know what you.
You're right, you're right.
Mr. Chairman, I make a recommendation that be, a motion rather, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Make a motion that we.
To the mayor.
To the mayor that we refer Marie Keaton as our representative for the city, for the Nogat County Valley Planning Commission, Nogat County Valley Council of Governments.
No, no, regional planning commission.
Regional Planning Commission. I'll get it someday.
That's right.
I'm trying the big ones, but it's not.
Second.
Motion was made in second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Just remember, Marie volunteered.
Yes, she did.
She did.
And I, and I will tell you that Mr. Flanagan, I believe, was, was, was appointed as the representative from the town of Thomaston, which is in the same region, and I believe he indicated that he would.
Go and be glad to go.
Be glad to go with Marie to Commissioner Keaton for the first meeting or two.
That's good.
And that will, I, I believe that will still be the case.
Good. And going forward, it'll be a positive change, because in the past, we haven't really had a direct line of continuous communication with our regional planning representatives.
Yeah.
And could we make it like a, under. Agenda item? An agenda item every month, if she's here, just to say what's going on?
We, we certainly could. I, I don't know, and we can, again, Mr. Flanagan knows, is much more familiar than I am, I don't know that the regional planning commission is going to meet every month, maybe every other month, but certainly, we can add an item to the agenda on those months. I think they're going to meet early in the month, so certainly, we'll have time to add that to the agenda for any, any month when there is a meeting.
Good.
Well, if they follow the, the format of the predecessor, a lot of the work was done in subcommittees, so even if they don't have a full meeting, she may have some subcommittee report.
And I also believe, again, from, from Mr. Flanagan's wealth of knowledge about this, is that a lot of, a lot of work is, will get done at the staff level, and that the, the regional planning commission will, will tend to deal with bigger policy issues. They, they may get occasionally, I think, from staff that needs, you know, more in-depth review or more than just a passing review. But I, I think that's a great idea, we'll add that as an agenda item, and we'll, we'll let Commissioner Keaton know that ahead of time, so she's not surprised the first meeting.
She can read her own agenda items.
Right.
Next item.
Under old business, they're being done, under new business, number one, adoption of the two thousand fifteen regular meeting schedule.
And as chairman and members of the commission, we included in your packets a draft of your schedule for the next thirteen months, as has traditionally been the case. It will be the fourth Wednesday of the month, there are a couple of places where it's the fifth Wednesday of the month, because it's a month when all the boards kind of shift a week, because the week starts on, sorry, the month starts on a Wednesday, and that kind of throws everybody off. And the only difference will be, as is again often the case with your November meeting, the fourth Wednesday would be the day before Thanksgiving, your schedule would have it, as was the case this year, to have it on the, the fourth Monday. You had agreed informally last month to have your December meeting before the Christmas holiday, as opposed to after, or the, or the Monday before everyone seemed to be comfortable, December twenty-third, so that's your schedule. We need a motion to adopt this regular meeting schedule.
Motion is in order.
Mr. Chairman, I move the planning commission adopt the two thousand fifteen regular meeting schedule as presented.
Motion is made in second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next.
And two, under new business, election of officers.
You typically wait until you have all five regular members, you only have three tonight, so we can simply move this to your January meeting as a, as a new business, I, I guess we'll put it as, well, we'll put it as subitem on your agenda.
Right, okay.
So it goes.
So we'll just simply postpone it to, to January.
Well, let's hope it doesn't go like you do, one of you like seven months.
Well, if it does, you get to be the chairman.
Oh, yeah.
You like, you like.
Okay.
Next section, staff reports. Number one, monthly subdivision status report.
As we always do, we, and we provide you with a, an inventory of the current active subdivisions. You'll notice in gray on that chart, two changes, one, the application that you received this evening, the subdivision from Mr. Fraser, that's been added. We also highlighted application 274, which is Mr. Delfino's subdivision that's off of Village Street. This is Section 5, Cold Spring Farm. We did receive today a, well, what I thought was a letter of credit. Apparently, it's an application to a financial institution by Mr. Delfino requesting a letter of credit. So it appears that he wants to keep this subdivision active. Technically, he's got till the 29th of December, which is next week. We would place this item on the agenda one way or the other for your January meeting. If he gets a letter in time, he would still need this commission's approval to ex- let me back up a second. If he secures a letter of credit, then the conditional approval is replaced by a final approval, automatically, that's the law. But because he will have run out of time in the subdivision, based on your votes, your approval, your actions, he will need to come back to this commission and request an extension of the expiration date of the subdivision. He can get up to four more years. He's allowed nine, and then an additional five. Nine plus one that you granted him was all conditional, and you may recall that you can grant him up to four more, but it would have to be a final approval. There's no more, he's run out of conditional approval time. It's kind of a quirk in the statute, the timetables don't fit together perfectly. So if he does have a letter of credit in time for your next meeting, we will remind him of the need to appear or write a letter requesting that the board extend the expiration date of the subdivision up to four more years. And then you can, so we have the bond in place, you can vote to grant him an extension. And that will keep the subdivision alive, and at that point, it'll be a final approval. So we'll see what- we'll see what rolls around.
Very good. Next. Update on 2000 Plan of Conservation and Development.
Just a reminder, your January meeting with public consultant to continue your discussion of the draft, working draft, preliminary draft of plan is actually next Tuesday, the 30th. It'll be at 7:00 PM, and it'll again be in this room on this week's places, the meeting that you had scheduled for January 5th, and the chairman had indicated that he would be unable to make that meeting, so we're going to do it next Tuesday, the 30th, in this room, 7:00 PM. We will get the agenda out to you tomorrow, I believe, and you'll probably just need to bring the draft of the documents. And whatever else we'll bring, I don't think, I don't know that we have any additional material for you on it. Basically, we're going to go over. We're going to pick up where we left off, and hopefully, people have had a chance to read it and comment on it. You know, and we keep telling, we have- Draft of it is up online. We have notified the mayor, the council, department heads, other interested individuals that the document is available, and we've emphasized that it is a preliminary, early working, subject to change draft. It is not, I mean, I think when people see a document like that, they think, oh, it's on the ready to go.
Yep.
It's still at an early stage for your discussion and for getting feedback and comments from the public, so that's where we're at with that.
And those comments recorded to draft would be in addition to public meetings.
Correct.
Will still be up.
Right. I mean, someone could choose to not come in at a meeting, but they see the draft, they have comments on it, they can provide us in writing or with an email, and of course, you have the listening session in the latter part of January. So again, we're trying to give the public multiple opportunities to comment on the draft.
Right, no, that's January 24th.
I believe that's correct, yeah, that's a Saturday from 9 to 11 at the public library.
Correct.
Last item on the agenda, communications. Nothing additions.
Need a motion to-
Mr. Chairman, to make a motion that this meeting, you, Chairman-
Does everybody have a Merry Christmas?
And does everybody have a Merry-
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, Mr. Chairman? Merry Christmas.
Happy Christmas.
Well, also, happy New Year to you, too, sir.
That's right.
I gotta ask you something. The bill orders me a little bit, because I already brought up the issue at the POCD. All those restrictions. And it doesn't have to be, you know, part of the agenda. The city charter does say that the public has a right to be heard at any regular meeting of any board or commission in the city. So when I raise my, if you don't put it on the schedule, when I raise my hand, and then you say, "Ellen, you know," I don't think that's proper, because it's not arbitrary to whether or not-
Well, I'm not an expert in procedures, so, you know-
But I'm just saying-
Give me some slack.
Oh, I'm not, I'm not upset or anything, but I'm just saying, you know, the way that it's worded in the charter, it says, "Any elector shall have the right to appear." So as an elector-
Right.
And as a fat parent, it's my right to be heard, so when I raise my hand, if it's not on the agenda, and you say, "Is there a right, Mr. Weiner?" If he says anything, then you're saying that might-
It's up to us to say yes or no.
It's not up to me to make that decision.
It's-
It's not up to me to make that decision, that's why I prefer that.
I understand, I'm not, I'm just saying, it's not, you have to let me say something,
no matter what. If I say something that's not proper, then you can shut me down, but if you-
I know what you're saying.
It sounds like a technicality, but to me, it's my-
No, you're right.
My rights, I'm very passionate about my rights, so I come to, if I come to a meeting and I have something to say, I just don't want to have like, "Oh, Shaun wants to talk again" kind of thing. It makes me feel like I'm not here to be a thorn in anyone's side, but you know what I'm saying?
I know what you're saying. I know what you're saying.
That's all.
All right, thank you.
I'm not complaining, don't worry. I appreciate that you let me speak.
Okay.
If I came off negative, that wasn't my intention.
I think the one place where the commission has a first caution is where there are items on the agenda that are public hearing items, and obviously, public hearings tend to let the public speak, where it can get tricky, but again, it becomes the chairman's job to sort of make sure it doesn't get out of hand, is that you don't want members of the public speaking at, if you will, the wrong time.